It's been awhile. Stay with me. Okay, we're in stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I guess, do I call the meeting to order? We got, alright.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one ground, individual liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we are going to do a roll call. Alderman Volkart?
Here.
Alderwoman Ravenscraft?
Here.
Alderwoman Colbert?
Here.
I'm here. Alderman Wilson?
Here.
And Alderman Lewis?
Here.
Alright, we are going to do approval of the meeting minutes. You had those distributed in your packet. I did see in here, I think we spelled Taylor Burks' name wrong. Yeah. He's Tyler, it's in here as Tyler, he's Taylor. T A Y L O R. Other than that-
Is this supposed to be a motion to approve as amended for?
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as amended.
Alright, motion made by Alderman Volkart. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Alderman Lewis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the September 3rd, 2024 meeting minutes are approved. Now, we are going to move on to approval of tonight's agenda, which you have before you. Any changes to that agenda? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Alright, second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Wilson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Alright. We've got, the, tonight's agenda is approved. We don't have any special items on the agenda, no appointments to boards and commissions, no scheduled public comment or public hearing, and that brings us to introductions and first readings. Up first is council bill number 2024-34, an ordinance to amend Chapter 20, traffic code, one-way streets at South College and Burnham Avenue. We will go to you.
Thank you. Members of the board, before this evening is the first reading of the ordinance for the conversion of the 100-200 block of Burnham Ave. And the 100 block of South College Street from two-way traffic to one-way traffic. We've reported this to the board various times over the last past few months as the traffic study was completed and data gathered. With this plan's conversion, which was determined to be necessary through the traffic control, or traffic study, the 100-200 block of Burnham Ave would transition to one-way westbound traffic only. And the 100 block of South College Street would transition to one-way southbound traffic only. Staff recently sent out mailers to all residents along the effective route and hang door hangers throughout the immediate vicinity. We had a public meeting, open house, this evening from 6:00 to 7:00. Two residents came and voiced their opinion. But at the end, they agreed that it was probably the right move, although slightly inconvenient. Upon completion, or upon approval of a second reading at the next board meeting, staff would then schedule installation of all required signage and coordinate with the police department for a temporary moratorium on issuing citations, just as we did with the Red Bud Line conversion.
What does that do to the parking?
I'm sorry?
The street side parking?
There's no parking on that route.
So no parking at all?
Road's not widened.
Okay.
How, how much too narrow is it for 20 feet? Twenty feet? Twenty feet too narrow?
Yeah, the-
It's about 30 feet if you're out there. We use a minimum 50-foot right-of-way per code at two-way traffic.
I'm sorry? So, South College extends off of Broadway at the upholstery shop. And then it goes down by the old dentist office at the intersection of Johnson Ave. So it would be the portion of South College south of Johnson Ave.
Are there other streets that exist out there that are that narrow?
After this one, I mean, Johnson is narrow, but it's at 50 feet, almost exact by comparison. So we have, we certainly have some road sections where the pavement is narrow, but we have existing right-of-way where we could widen that pavement as needed. This is the last one on the list, I believe. At least the last through street.
Correct. Johnson Ave was the other one that was looked at consideration, but it has appropriate right-of-way to allow for improvements to meet standards for two-way traffic.
So that 30 feet you're talking about is right-of-way to right-of-way? It's not, that's not the pavement?
The pavement with approximately 12 feet. So it was the same as Red Bud.
Any other questions for Mr. Creel? Alright, I'll entertain a motion on council bill number 2024-34.
So moved.
Alright, seconded by Alderwoman Colbert. We're gonna do a roll call vote. Alderman Volkart?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ravenscraft?
Aye.
Alderwoman Colbert?
Aye.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. That council bill passes, and we will move on to, is this next one yours too? Alright, council bill number 2024-35, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Enhancement Funds Supplemental Agreement. Mr. Creel, back to you.
Thank you. Members of the board, before you this evening, consideration, did we, is this a resolution, Darrell? Or did we go with ordinance on this one?
It has to be ordinance.
Ordinance, okay. Yeah, that's right, we're going first and second read this evening. This ordinance is required for the TAP grant, for the sidewalk and trail projects. As with any federally funded project, there are certain requirements that we have to meet in order to be eligible for reimbursement. This one is no different. Throughout the process, we've been hit with additional requirements, such as the Cultural Resource Survey, which cost more than what the anticipated budget was, and extended our timeline. That has happened again. Now, we are required to complete a wetland delineation study. So I'm still working with the consultant engineer on the supplemental agreement on that side of the table. But it's become clear that the project is not going to meet the initially agreed-upon deadlines. MODOT staff have been working with city staff to re-ski, relay out the schedule for this project. You'll note in the memo that this pushes the dates into early part of 2025. Certainly not ideal, but when we have these environmental study requirements that were pushed on us, then we have to extend the project out accordingly to complete that work. So with the approval of this ordinance, staff will be able to continue working on the TAP grant project to meet all the requirements, so that we can hopefully begin bid letting at New Year's Day. Well, it's gonna be the day after, obviously. And then with a bid opening approximately February 1st, and a construction contract award on March 1st.
Did we delineate any wetlands?
So, no. What it comes down to is older maps that, if you go back and look at some of, some maps that don't necessarily show the construction in the area, a portion of it, there was a small pond that was filled in when the YMCA was constructed, and part of that building sits over that area. But there is also a drainage channel that exists that goes through the YMCA property, across Liberty Lane, through the sidewalk area. So we have to conduct a wetland delineation study to make sure there are not any protected species.
So that even, that constitutes a wetland?
Yes, sir.
If you look at a topo map, anything blue is gonna trigger that. Cool. Is it?
I mean, not cool, but interesting. Is there a lot of those, like, around town?
Basically, every property in city limits at one point or another probably had a pond on it. So this won't be the only time. I mean, it's not the only time. We ran into this before. We had to do wetland delineation on Perry Avenue extension. It's just, way it goes.
Alright, any other questions on council bill number 2024-35? Alright, we will do a roll call vote, or we'll take a motion, excuse me. Can I get a motion to approve council bill 2024-35? So moved. Can I get a second? Alright, we're gonna count second by Alderwoman Colbert. Now, we'll do a roll call vote. Alderman Volkart?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ravenscraft?
Aye.
Alderwoman Colbert?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Alright, council bill 2024-35 is approved. We will now move on to old business. Under old business, we have ordinance number 1492. That is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Enhancement Funds Supplemental Agreement. So we're doing that one again? That should be under new business, right?
Old business now.
Cause-
It was new business.
Has anything changed at all?
This is the second read of-
Second reading of the ordinance we just approved?
There's been nothing changed in the last 30 seconds, I'm aware of.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 1492.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Volkart, seconded by Alderman Lewis. Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Alderman Volkart?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ravenscraft?
Aye.
Alderman, Alderwoman Colbert?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Alright, ordinance number 1492 has been approved. Now, under new business, we move on to a resolution that was tabled at our last meeting, and that is Resolution 2024-55, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into a letter of agreement with Synergy Sports Charlotte LLC. Is that your report?
I suppose. Not really any new news here. This was tabled because we only had four of you here last time around. We had some good discussion around this item. At our last meeting, as you recall, and as seen in the minutes, Mr. Burks presented a proposal to cost share, a study to determine whether or not a sports complex was feasible in Ashland. What size that facility would need to be, what type of tournament play would be scheduled there. Just deep dive the financials of what that could look like, as well as a variety of other things that are included in the statement of work for Synergy Sports. Again, this item was tabled. I don't know that I have anything else to add to the report. I did talk to a number of other cities that are working with Synergy. Believe I sent that report out in email, but in all of those instances, Synergy was contracted by the city of the city's accord. In all those cities, they have existing rec complexes that they were looking to revitalize, expand, improve, and through the conventional RFP or RFQ process, they arrived at working with Synergy. So, little bit different than what is being proposed here, but again, nothing necessarily wrong with Synergy and potentially working with Synergy, it's just the manner in which it has been presented to the city. Hope it's fiction.
Any further discussion? Anyone hear from anybody since the last meeting?
I haven't heard from anyone else or anything, but I, I think it's a little bit risky to, to try and mix private and public funds. It's a lot of money. 10 grand, we're talking about. Even if we have, we have to pay half of it to basically get an answer of, do we need it or do we not? I think we could figure out around this table for a lot, less than $10,000. Would it be used? Absolutely. Can we afford it? And so, if a pi, if a private entity wants to take that on, more power to them, I don't think it would be in the city's best interest to start mixing our funds.
Any other comments? Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, obviously, I think the elephant in the room is since the time that he presented last, we've been faced with a lot of difficulties at school, and a lot of, you know, and I think that's weighing on a lot of people's minds when we're talking about priorities, whether we're talking about sports infrastructure or potentially putting resources into, you know, other areas. I think for a lot of folks in the community, although I think it's a good idea, it might not be top priority, and not that we would, you know, so I think, I think for me, it's not like a no forever, cause I do, I do think in certain instances, public-private partnerships can be beneficial, but I think right now, the timing is wrong for us.
Well, his, his proposal is a no forever for me. Just because of the way it's designed, where we become the sole entity on the hook for everything. I mean, we could just do that, like Mr. Lewis said, we can do that on our own and be on the hook for everything. We don't need to partner with somebody else for us to be on the hook for everything. So it's a, I think it's definitely something that we should discuss at a later time without, you know, either his involvement or synergies, or if we determine to go through synergy sometime later. But right now, with us being solely on the hook for it and expecting money upfront, I just don't think that that's something that, I mean, it sounds like feedback that I've heard from the last meeting. We discussed this, was that a lot of people were in agreement, does that, why would we pay money to help him determine if we're gonna be on the hook or something, when we could just do it ourselves?
Alright. Can I get a motion on the resolution? Oh, let's see, number 2024-55.
Can, can we just not make a motion and it just die on the vine?
You can make a motion, I can entertain a motion to table indefinitely.
Well, cause my curiosity is, I'm tempted to make a motion to decline it, so everybody can vote an affirmative, but, you know, I don't want it to be complicated where they don't know if they're voting yes for yes, do it, or yes for not do it.
So you could have a motion to reject, I don't know if y'all can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, very well.
You could have a motion to reject it, in which case, voting yes means the bill would fail.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to reject a proposal.
Alright. Alderman Volkart has made a motion to reject Resolution 2024-55. That motion was seconded by Alderman Wilson. We'll take a roll call vote now, Alderman. So a yes vote would be to reject the resolution. Alderman Volkart, your vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ravenscraft?
Aye.
Alderwoman Colbert?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
With that vote, Resolution 2024-55 is rejected. We will move on to item 80, which is a Resolution 2024-56, a resolution to appoint Doris Slinger as the employer delegate at the Missouri Local Government Retirement Systems Annual Meeting. Is this like when you missed the meeting, we volunteered you to do something?
Potentially. So I mean, we could have some discussion. Doris actually cannot attend the conference. If anyone would like to attend a conference in two weeks?
24th, 25th.
Three weeks. If you would like to go to a conference at the lake and learn about our public retirement system and represent the city, you're welcome to speak up now, and we will get you registered, and we can slide your name onto this resolution instead of Doris', cause he cannot go. But we simply threw his name on there as the highest elected official. It has to be one of you, it cannot be a staff member.
Is it something that would be of value to have one of us there?
So, the business meeting is not necessarily of value where you would vote, because the only thing on that business meeting that I can tell that requires vote is the appointment of loggers trustees. So if you have a vested interest in who those trustees are, which I highly doubt anyone knows who any of those potential appointees are, that's what we would be voting on. But the agenda itself, in terms of learning about the loggers retirement system, is certainly beneficial information for the city to have access to, and the lake is not far away.
When is it?
24th, 25th.
Can anyone attend? Alright, for now, we're gonna-
If I recall, it starts at like lunchtime on the 24th, and then early afternoon on the 24th. So it's not a full day on the 24th, I mean.
Okay.
That might make a difference then. Cause I've got something the morning of the 24th, but if no one else could attend, I could probably do something.
I'll entertain a motion to amend the resolution to insert Alderman Lewis instead of Mayor Slinger, on the hope that he might be able to attend.
Is there anyone else that could?
There's a, there's a primary school concert the 24th.
Yeah, for sure.
Six p.m.
Yeah. Plus with a bunch of my other stuff. Alright, I'll entertain that motion to amend the resolution to change out Alderman Lewis with Mayor Slinger, or to insert him instead of Mayor Slinger.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Volkart. Can I get a second?
Sorry.
Alright, second made by Alderman Wilson. That's a voice vote, so all in favor, please, in favor of ordinance number 2024-56, say aye. As amended. All in, all opposed? Alright, that resolution is approved. We're gonna move on to reports. The mayor is absent, so no report unless Kyle, did he submit anything?
I don't believe so. He was just sending me some texts, but I don't think anything was for report.
Okay. So we're on to your report.
Park plans. So park plan, public survey's going well. They've got a couple hundred responses on that. Many more responses than they typically get on these things, so they're quite satisfied with the feedback they've received. I think we intend to meet, the survey will close on the 5th, so this Saturday, and then we should be meeting next week or the week after to go over that survey data with a consultant and start moving that forward. So, next step, they will consolidate all that data, make some amendments to their thoughts and ideas, and then present that to the park board to get additional feedback. Just kinda keep mulling it over until we arrive at a final plan that the park board can adopt, or at least recommend to you guys to adopt. Kinda move forward from there. Once that's done, we'll have a general concept of what the price can be for rebuilding that park, and we'll evaluate what next steps are. The compensation study, initial data scrub there is done. I believe we're meeting with them next week or the week prior to go over that initial data. So probably looking at end of, or middle or end of November meeting for that report to be presented to the board in a recommendation. I sent out an email about moving that November 5th meeting. I failed to realize that we have an extra Tuesday in October, so another option that may be more agreeable is to just bump it up to the 29th, if there's any desire to do that. I know Stephanie will be gone the entire week of the 5th, so if the 29th works on a Tuesday night, is her normal night, we can, we could certainly do that.
That works for me.
I mean, it doesn't have to-
Works for me.
Don't have to say yea or nay now. We will have something on next agenda to-
Hey Kyle, if you're asking about Tuesday to 29th, is that correct?
Correct.
Did I hear you right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I'm available then as well. Thank you.
So, we will have an action item on the next agenda to move that. And we'll also have an action item for anything else that needs to be moved for the rest of the year. And then in December, we'll, we'll come with the ordinance to potentially amend the schedule for meetings next year to accommodate holidays and just try and get out ahead of it instead of doing it two meetings prior, like we've done this year. Other than that, so on loggers, so we'll be sending Rick. I will send him the agenda to confirm availability. You just wanna drive down every day. Okay, so we'll plan on driving down. Mr. Creel received the most votes, will be the rep for the employers, so he will be attending as well to represent the employers, or the employees, I should say. I think that's all I have.
Great. City attorney's report from the phone.
New report tonight.
Alright. Public Works Director Monthly Report, Mr. Creel.
Thank you. So, just gonna touch on a few highlights in my report that was in the packet. Regarding the East Broadway ADA Sidewalk Project that MODOT completed, we are working with MODOT to address some issues and concerns. City administrators received multiple complaints from folks tripping on a part of that new sidewalk in the 100 block of East Broadway. Chip seal project was completed on the 3rd of September. We've already touched on most of the other stuff. The stormwater projects, Oak Street and Caspian Circle consultant should be as, should be working towards getting the easements procured, and then we can look to begin bid, bidding process for that project. And we recently completed some smoke testing for the central area of town. Several deficiencies were found, and identified and found, and various repairs have been completed or are being scheduled.
Great. Any questions for James?
Other than, you're talking about the sidewalk project. Down here, right off of Chico?
Yes, sir.
I did notice they're looking that over a few days ago, and I've seen some sandbags there, probably trying to stop the mud from flowing over.
Yes.
You know, that-
Yep, so-
Hopefully that works, but is there, is there a plan B? After it's seeded, if water is still standing there, if it's so low that it's standing-
Certainly.
It's gonna freeze-
Yep.
And it's gonna be another liability issue, so-
Yes.
So are they taking, have they-
As that is in MODOT's right-of-way, it'll be their ownership and maintenance. In these cursory conversations, and we did, we took several photographs of issues that area, particularly where they were silting in, to show that water had been standing, and just a whole myriad of deficiencies. So we'll continue to work with them and make sure that, that, you know, as an ADA project, touted as an ADA compliance project, that they actually are in fact ADA compliant.
Do we have a timeframe on painting Main Street?
Painting Main Street? Not at this current, not yet. I'm currently working to get the RFP together for the striping machine, so the staff can complete that. But it will be, it's a drawn-out process by the time you post it, give notice of award, and are able to procure the machine itself. I'm afraid that we may get into winter season where it would be not the most ideal environment to conduct striping operations. What I'll do in the meantime is look at possible rental units. We recently rented one, but it's not set up to do the dual striping like we would need. Well, we could do skip dash.
Is it possible, I mean, is there any way that at least the southbound left-hand turn and straight right out here could be marked? I mean, even if it's chalked like they do when they get ready to paint it?
So-
You know what I mean?
On that regard, I would most likely just work with Como Striping, he lives here in town.
Cause that's the most important-
That's his bread and butter, those turn lanes. So turn lanes and private parking lots.
And I don't think the, you know, the stripes all the way down, or obviously we want them at some point, but the, at least the turning lane going that way, cause that's the only spot where there's three lanes. And it gets a little confusing there in the mornings, for sure.
Turn lanes and crosswalks, and that is something that we can get that machine to do in-house also, as long as we're able to pick up those stencils.
Have you gotten any feedback on those new stop signs in my area and neighborhood you put in?
Mixed.
Okay.
You know, we're seeing general compliance for the most part, aside from, you know, an outlier here or there. It's new, it's something that folks haven't necessarily been used to before, and, you know, we, hopefully, the rest of the motor in public is taking that into consideration. I know what I'm going through there, I make sure that if someone's approaching to actually stop before I just go ahead and make my turn. But other than that, there hasn't really been any complaints. I think it's helped with speeding issues through that stretch.
I think so too.
Okay, good. Any other questions for James? Alright, we're gonna move on to Board of Aldermen Reports. Alderman Volkart?
No report.
Alderwoman Ravenscraft?
No report.
Alderwoman Colbert?
No, we just had a really good fall festival. Obviously, the park board was all there and volunteered, and I think it went really well. There were a lot of vendors there, so.
Yeah, I was out there in the morning, and I was surprised, I mean, it was packed. I wondered, did the Mizzou game impact it in the afternoon, or was it still pretty well?
Yeah, in the afternoon, it did die down. It got hot, like when the sun came out. So it wasn't as, it wasn't as busy as I was expecting it to be in the afternoon, but I think like as far as vendors go, it was a really good turnout, so.
What's the next parks event?
Christmas parade.
Do we have a date on that yet?
I think they're meeting-
They're meeting on the 21st- They're meeting on the twenty first, they had to be pushed because of Columbus Day?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll know then?
Perfect, okay, let's go to, I don't have a report, Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Lewis?
No report.
All right, general comments by the public. All right. If there's no objections, then I guess we're going to, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, we're adjourned, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks.